Good morning. Welcome to the June 18th, 2019, meeting for the Slayton County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here. I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where the citizens may speak on county government on items that are not on today's agenda and usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Norman Mountleflina got several questions. On the jail study commission, are you making any progress? Yeah, I know you can't answer or you won't. Another issue, mileage. When you go to a location, you get paid mileage as a county commissioner, as I understand. But do you get or do you apply mileage when you come from your house to here? It's being done. So, as the legislature proposed for home rule, so what will that allow you to do? Will we be seceding from the state and the union? So now you're leading a revolution. This, yeah, I know, kind of silly questions, but we need to quit playing favoritism. It's all for one and one for all. You're upgrading Waterwell Road, but yet you won't pay for the gravel on the people out here in the northwest part of the county, and they offered to pay for it and put it out. So are the residents and the users going to pay for these upgrades on Waterwell Road? You've got to treat all the people fairly, equally. Yeah, that's enough for today. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Just quickly, our group that is looking at ideas.
And your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Laney Meyer Huntington Road. Our group, it's hard to organize a large number of people. The ones, we finally got together, we'll meet on the 28th to just kick around the ideas. A couple of us did tour the jail and have taken a look at what's going on there. And so I just wanted to update you that we're still interested in being community activists. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let you know that the department heads that are involved in those things do keep us apprised of what's going on and who they're meeting with and the outcomes of those meetings, so. But thank you for taking the interest. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Regular Business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented today.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure that the minutes show that item number four has been removed and it's a three-item agenda.
Yeah, I guess that's just why I just said as presented today, I guess, is the... But yeah, thank you for clarifying. That's fine.
A second to motion. It's been moved to a second that we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
RFA 154-19, Resolution 19-2272 Cunningham Road Controlled Access with Tim Hannamleton, Planning and zoning administrator, and Darren Fishel, road and bridge administrator.
Good morning, Tim and Darren.
Good morning. The county commission has been working on changing the classification of Cunningham Road from a minimum maintenance to controlled access minimum maintenance. The following is a checklist of steps and actions for a road to be declared controlled access or minimum maintenance, and we are at the point now where it is, the planning commission has held their hearing, and it is now coming back to you, and I'll be presenting their recommendation. On June 3rd, the planning commission made a unanimous recommendation of approval of Resolution 19-2272. Staff is recommending approval as far as budget impact, approval of the BOC, of the Board of County Commissioners of this road petition for controlled access minimum maintenance. Road would require the installation of gates, the cost of providing and installing a gate meeting Slayton County requirements would be borne by the adjoining property owners. Road and bridge would then provide the lock and the gate and keys for the property owners, which would cost less than $30. County administration is recommending approval as well.
Questions of the staff?
No.
Looks like this has been a long, drawn-out process for something that's actually pretty simple. Obviously, you've, I think I saw back here where all the adjoining property owners have been apprised of it and signed off on it and are okay with it.
Yes.
That type of thing?
Correct.
Is there any public comment? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the change to a portion of Cunningham Road to a controlled access minimum maintenance road as requested.
A second to motion. It's been moved to a second that we approve, RFA 154-19, Resolution 19-2272 Cunningham Road Controlled Access. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. We will move on to item number three.
Pre-trial statistics presentation with Annie Gruyves, committee corrections director.
Anne, good morning, Annie.
Good morning. I apologize, Andrew Pelant, the drug court, or drug court pre-trial coordinator was supposed to be here, but he had court in Manhattan, so you get me.
Okay, that having been said, you're the one that's in charge of that department anyway, so we assume that your comments and numbers will be correct. I want the public to know that the commission did decide that we wanted, we've had this information for a week or 10 days now, and we do want the public to be aware of these numbers, the statistics. We met last week with all of the judges that were involved and the defense attorneys and the prosecuting attorney, and I will state that that meeting went very well. Everybody is on board with trying to make this a successful program and make, and save the county a great deal of money, which it already has done, and hopefully it will continue to grow in that area and will all be the benefits of that process. So, that having been rambled through, Annie, I will let you speak.
Well, I also want to say that, yes, the money savings is significant, and I think it'll continue to be that way, but we're also making a better community when you can get clients out of the jail at a quicker rate, getting back employed, get them taking care of their families, so they're not having to use the services that are so costly in the community. So, there's some real benefit to both money, cost savings to the taxpayers on both sides. So, I've handed out two pieces of paper, so if you're interested, I have more sitting right up here, Gerald. So there's two pieces. The first one, I'm just going to quickly go over, it's the graph with pre-trial program, jail reduction by month in April, it clearly shows, and then in June. So, in, there were 29 defendants placed on pre-trial services in the month of April, and 42 defendants were placed on in the month of May totaling 71 active right now from that. As of May 4th, or 31st, 43 are actively being supervised, 15 are in custody, five have had their pre-trial bond revoked, and eight have had their charges dismissed or have not been sentenced. They were released. So that is this graph, and it clearly outlines the percentage based on the things I just said. So, I wanted, after we met on last week or a week ago with the stakeholders of this committee, several questions were asked, and so we are trying to make sure we're covering those. So you have to remember, 43 are currently actively being supervised, they're in our system, being serviced, those kind of things. 15 are still in custody. Several people wanted to know why those people are still in custody, so I had Andrew write down their charges. So I'm just going to rattle off a few of the charges and their current bond, because that is what's keeping them in. One is an aggravated battery, criminal discharge of a firearm, intimidation of a witness, criminal threat, the bond's at $65,000. Another one's a criminal threat, domestic battery, violation of protecting order, $25,000 on that. Another one's stalking, criminal theft, violation of protecting order, that's a $50,000 bond. You can see that those are pretty violent crimes that are going on, and those are the higher bonds that the judges have determined. They have been assessed for pre-trial. If they get and make that bond, they could come to pre-trial services, and they would go to our highest level of services and supervision. Another one is distribution of heroin, possession of marijuana, no drug tax stamp, possession of paraphernalia, $50,000 bond. A lot of aggravated domestic batteries, we've seen an increase in that, I think Ellen said that the other day at the meeting, that we've seen a real increase in our domestic violence over the last couple of years. Those people tend to have higher bonds and are not released as often. The other one, I was in aggravated battery, it's got a $20,000 bond. But they've all been assessed by our agency, so they can come to pre-trial if they bond out and get those intensive services, so.
I think that shows that we're just, and I shouldn't say we, the judges and the court system is just not allowing everybody to go through pre-trial and just be automatically released.
Right.
I mean, those major offenses are being prosecuted as such, and not everybody's just jumping right out of jail overnight.
Well, we knew that the whole time, the whole premise of pre-trial is you keep the higher-risk, more violent offenders in, and you reduce and release those lower-risk, non-violent offenders. So, that's exactly what the judge's graph and assessment tool is showing, that it's working that way. Obviously, when you look at the ones that are still in, that have been assessed, those 15, they're carrying pretty serious offenses, and they're a danger to others in the community, so. And then, of the five who've had their pre-trial bond revoked, two were because of new alleged crimes. Now, they have not been convicted, but they did get new charges, and three were failures to appear. Now, those three do have an opportunity to come back to pre-trial. They had to appear in front of the judge, they can come back and appear back and be back with us. So that does not mean that they would be an automatic return to jail and no release out until they're sentenced, so. 71 defendants placed on pre-trial supervision in April and May. It has saved a total of 1,099 jail days. If Andrew wants to make that clear, at $35 a day, that could be a savings, but it's kind of a muddy number, because we don't know how many could have bonded out before pre-trial started and who didn't. So what we're going to do over time, once we kind of get our feet under us with this beginning, we'll start looking for some baseline data that will tell us who could have bonded out without pre-trial existence and who couldn't have. And then we'll start looking to see what the total cost savings might be. At this point, we know we're saving something, but to put it down for sure what that amount is, it's a little bit, it could be an inaccurate number, and that's not something we want to share right now. But we do know that they've saved 1,099 days of bed space at 71 clients, so that is significant.
Even if we're only 50%, we're over capacity right now in the jails, so those people would be paying the out-of-county the cost, if I'm not mistaken. So that would be, even if it's half, 35 times $35 a day, I mean, that's a pretty significant number on, probably $1,000 or more a day, so.
Right.
There you go.
Yeah. So, so far in June, we've had 22 new defendants placed on pre-trial supervision. 15 are out of custody, and 93 days were saved in that period. And the same thing would apply, so out of the 22 placed on, 15 got out, the others are remaining due to their risk level and their higher bond. Should they meet that bond, they'll be placed back on services with us. So we wanted to give you an idea of what we've done with the clients and the services we've offered. We've offered them to lots of community resources, drug and alcohol evaluations, drug and alcohol and treatment, including social detox and outpatient groups. We've offered a lot of drug and alcohol support groups. We've paid for temporary housing when they first get out. We've given lots and lots of bus passes that assists them in getting to and from their appointments and to and from work and to and from the court, which is critical. We've done the USD 305 diploma completion program. Some people had started their GED but didn't finish, so we went ahead and paid that difference and got them their diploma and got that completed. They're attending our in-house cognitive-based programming, and we are working with them to secure all the resources of free meals. You know, there's a lot of places you can get free meals, shower, clothing, all those things, and so we're taking them to those locations, allowing them to set themselves up and get their families back and forth for those kind of things. And we're kind of getting them started back with some clothing and hygiene products so that they're able to get back into their home situation and take care of that. So that's been pretty successful. And we're always utilizing our evidence-based practices, which is just research that tells you how to react with clients, how to interview and how to speak with them, it's giving respect back and forth, those kind of things. So all that's going on. And I mentioned this, we're in the study area of a new system, a technical system that would allow us to have excellent collaboration with all our partners in the community. It's just gotten so large to rely on emails and phone calls, it just isn't effective. We don't get the information quick enough. So we have, we were actually contacted by a company out of Louisiana, and then they've tagged on another company, and I think we're going to do a site demo next month. But in addition to adding all our collaborators to a system where we can all click in and talk to one another and report on everybody, we also have talk-to-text, so we can send the clients their court dates, their doctor's appointments, all the visits they have coming up to their cellphone, and they'll have those on a regular basis. So that's kind of what we're really interested in for the pre-trial. And we're going to demo it with our drug court clients and our pre-trial clients. We think that's a small enough population, but one that we do a lot of work with and a lot of intensive supervision, so we kind of want to partner with that and see how that went. And I'm hoping that we're able to start something up that by the end of summer.
Okay.
So we're moving, and we're very, very happy that the commissioners funded this program, but also we're very delighted with the success we're seeing to date.
Well, it's obviously a process and work, if you will. I would like to ask administration and your department, you know, we have a monthly or a quarterly meeting with all department heads, that type of thing. I would like to ask that you set up something with their department, that this became a monthly thing, at least for the next few months, so that we can keep ourselves apprised of it, keep the public apprised of it, and see where this is really going. Because obviously, we've got some big steps ahead of us regarding the jail, and the more information, the quicker we get it, the more transparent it becomes. Even though the jail committee works off to the side, these numbers are coming out, and we want to keep everybody informed as much as we can in that regard, so.
That's fine. We can do that easily.
That having been rambled through, commissioners, do you have questions of Mrs. Gruyves regarding this program or anything, any statistics that she just presented?
I don't have any questions, but our meeting with the judges last week, I was impressed of their level of support. I don't want to use the term excited, but their level of support was fantastic, and it just, it's not going to work without them.
Right. Well, one of the research will tell you is that pre-trial has to have a judge's component. I mean, it just doesn't manage. And when I was researching pre-trial programs across the nation, but also in Kansas, two researchers that I'm good friends with said, you know, your biggest hurdle's going to be getting the judges on board. Judges don't like to lose control. They feel like, and that's not a slam, I'm not, but judges, they want to have that control at the bench, and I understand it. And that pre-trial kind of gives them some of that, you know? And I said, they're already on board. In fact, they're developing our assessment and our grid, our sentencing grid and our bond reduction grid. So I said, they're doing all of that. And she laughed, and she told me that out of all the programs that are already running and have been running for years, we're probably ahead of the game, and we hadn't even started taking clients yet. So that gave me real comfort, because we do have an excellent partnership with our judges and feel very, very lucky with that. And you've got to remember, too, we have that partnership at drug court. You know, the county commissioner stepped up again and developed, helped us develop drug court, and that partnership was critical with the judges, and we have it. So, we're very, very blessed.
I want to elaborate just a little bit on what Monty said there regarding the jail advisory committee. That does only involve two commissioners, so it is not an open meeting, and the commissioners are not doing something behind closed doors. And for three of the commissioners, they're getting this information as the public gets it. So it's not something that's been done in secret or anything like that, so. Other comments?
I just want to say, we, commissioners get a daily report of the jail population, and it was quite evident in May that something had happened. And whether it will sustain, where that's going to end up is still to be found out, but it definitely made a difference.
Yeah, I think, I agree. One of the things I try to remind people is that when you're dealing with this population of clients, you have peaks and valleys, and you're going to, and the drug court was the same way, and we've been doing that since '13. And you, we hit a great point, and then six months later, you're going to hit a little bit of, and then they go back up. And that is, you know, I've been 34 years in it, and that's not unusual. At different times of the year, would, you'd see these drops and increases, and it's not unusual, but if you sustain it, you know, working with this population is long-term work, it's sustainable. And if you continue to do that over the long haul, you will see success.
Well, thank you for a detailed report, and I do want to reemphasize that we set something up permanently for a few months now anyway. Set a date that, give them the well-advanced notice, they know when they're going to be here, and we don't change it. We're going to be on top of this on a regular basis.
Great.
So, any further comments from commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Annie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad to hear it's working this way, and we're keeping our fingers crossed and that it'll continue to gain momentum and save the taxpayers some money.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, that brings us to the end of our today's public forum agenda. I have asked, because it was a short meeting, I have asked, I'll put this under other business, that I have asked Darren Fishel to come in today and give us an update for, not only for the public, but for the commissioners, on what's been going on with flood repairs, damages, et cetera. So, Darren, welcome.
Good morning. Just a little update on how the flood repair. The flood started May 5th, May 8th, we started working on things. This is Simpson Road.
Todd, could you hit the lights, please? There we go, thank you.
This is Simpson Road, just here east of town. We had some major flooding that took place over this, this road. This is a little road, a little bridge down on Centennial. There's actually a bridge down underneath there. That happened on a three-inch rain in Linsburg. The flooding happened over two stages. There was one, and then with the release of the water from Canoplis, a heavy rain between here and Canoplis precipitated another one. This is Kingman Road over by Gypsum. This is Gypsum Valley. Gypsum Valley flooded as well, and OK 4 was shut down for a week or so, and we have some roads going in and out of there that the water went over. This is just another look at Simpson Road, and the debris. Not only does the floodwater bring the damage from the waters, but it also brings the debris out of the creeks.
That's looking north towards the fire station and the bridge, is that correct?
Yes, yes. This is Donmire Road. This is a box structure that we have on Donmire Road, just north of the River Bridge, and it is actually, it sank. Water got up under it, eroded, and it sank. Now, this is one of the, another reason why you shouldn't drive through floodwaters, because when the water was up and going over this road, you could not see that that was missing. So people that were just going around in barricades and driving through the waters would have been in some pretty serious trouble had they gone through that.
Do you have that comparison picture?
I do not have that photo, but it would be on my...
I will say that there's another picture that's got about six inches to a foot of water over the road, and if someone in their high-volume pickup decided that they could, high clearance pickup, they could drive through there, and they wouldn't even see this, and then boom, you can see what, I don't know how deep that is, Darren, what is that?
Oh, it's probably six, yeah, five, six feet. And so, that's another reason why not to drive through the water. And so it just shows, the water, you can see the barricade back there, that's how high the water was, because of the debris across the road. Engineering does have this box out for let, and hopefully we can get this thing moving, and we're thinking a couple of months have this road back open. This is Niles Road north of the interstate. This is a reason why after the barricades come down, even though there's water not over the road, there may be some damage. If you look here, this hole's about two feet deep, and it goes all the way across that road. It is just ready to collapse. So we do have a culvert coming for that. Hopefully by the first of next week or the end of this week, we should be done. This is a low-water crossing on Assyria Road. You see the water level right here. When that water's not there, it's about 15 feet to the bottom. So low-water crossing is kind of a misnomer. There should be a bridge there. This is a bridge on Honig Road that took the asphalt off the top of it and then left a pretty significant scour right there along the edge. This is repaired and open currently. This is actually, was one of the boxes that was going to be replaced last fall, but because we had to add the Armstrong Road box and the wet winter that they had... we had to add the Armstrong Road box and the wet winter that they had, that they couldn't work, it's, but it's supposed to be replaced this fall. This is a culvert that washed out on an earth road, we're having, we're struggling getting the earth roads back in shape, because as you know, it keeps raining every three or four days. This is Niles Road, south of Magwater Well, this whole half-mile section was just completely washed out, so until it gets dry enough to get in there and remove all these concrete, I'm not sure where those concrete chunks came from, to tell you the truth, but at some point, it had washed out before, and somebody dumped some fill in there, that's just my assumption, but these fields back here are getting gold and ready to harvest, and so we're working to get these things done, and unfortunately, at harvest, it's not a time of patience for the rural community, but we're doing what we can, when we can. This is just another look at that. At one time, this was a box culvert, and they made a low-water crossing out of it, and they put this culvert in here, and I'm thinking that these chunks of concrete came from that old box, they probably used it for riprap to shade it, and then when the crick came up, it just washed those chunks down the road, water can move a lot of things. This is some of the other things that we deal with, which is debris up against our bridges and structures. When we purchase excavators, this is why we buy them with that, this little grapple thumb on there, so we can get down in there and reach out and just pick that debris out of there. In the past, they used to use a winch truck, and somebody would walk out on that pile and hook the cable up.
Oh.
You know, just so, some of the things that we're doing to be safer, it may cost a little bit money, but nobody had to get down in that crick and try and any damage, and this is just some more debris up against a box culvert. And this is the work we try to do during the flood, so we can get to it while the water's up and remove it very quickly. This is what eighty to eighty-five percent of our damage is gonna look like, it's just these little spots where the water washed all the gravel off the road into the ditch. You see here where it washed it into the ditch, and that's work that we have to just stop what we're doing and go do, because in a couple of months, this will be grown up with grass. Right now, it's just recovered, you can easily see it, you don't have to get it to locate, and we go out there and we put it up along the side of the road like this and just let it dry, because you can't take that wet material and just put it out on the road and create a mess, and so that's why you'll see these along the road, and then the rural operator will slowly work it back across the road. And this is another place similar, but they have done the repair on it, and so what they do is they dip that out of the ditch and then restore the road and compact it. Now, this is just a shot off of our cartograph here, what you're looking at is we had four-hundred-and-forty-some total tasks, that would be sites that we either need to go work on or have worked on, and down there at the bottom, it says we have completed two-hundred-and-ninety-six of them, we are currently working on eighteen, and we have a hundred-and-twenty-nine planned. Out of those hundred-and-twenty-nine planned, a hundred or so of them are just aggregate, where we need to go put the aggregate. So, to date, we've spent a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, total twenty-five-hundred man-hours, which is eighty-one thousand, and then the labor and the equipment, and so that's a total of everything we had, and then this is just a map of what we have left. So, if you're looking at that, we're probably a little over sixty-seven, sixty-six percent complete. It is important to go do this work now, prior to KDEM and FEMA coming in, because when they, when they come and write PDAs, you will get paid for work that's been complete, and so anything that you don't have complete, they've got to go write these personal PDAs, personal property damage assessments for every site, and we don't want to have to do that, because there is so many, and then you have to go estimate, and then you have to, there's a big, long paper trail that comes with that.
So, if, just roughly my numbers are correct, roughly four-hundred-and-fifty different sites that you've had to repair or plan to repair, and we're doing that with the, what, four road and bridge crews? Is that how many crews we have?
We have three.
Three crews?
Three crews.
I mean, you can kind of get the feeling for how we're processing this. I'd like you also to elaborate, Darren, where the money's coming from?
The money for this repair, the labor is coming out of our general fund, but the money for the big-ticket repairs like the box and stuff like that is money that we have saved over the years to do, just for this type of event, and then when we get reimbursed from FEMA, which won't be all of it, it'll go back into that account.
And my whole point of that is to let people know that that's why we do have money in reserve for these rainy day funds, disasters, and we're not hit nearly as bad as some of the other counties to the south and the east, and we're prepared for it.
Right.
Celine County was, is in good shape financially to handle a significant disaster like this, so.
Yes.
Prior planning by everybody that was concerned is a good deal here.
Thank you.
So, other comments from Commissioners or questions, or? Well, Darren, thank you very much, we appreciate coming in to show us this, and I know that you're gonna get as many roads as possible open by harvest, we've got another ten days or so, it looks like, so if we can get this spigot shut off up from up above, why, it'll be a good deal.
If you do have anybody that's calling you and needs a repair, have them call me, that way I can kind of let them know where it's at in the schedule, or even if we can get to it, and I can speak with them, and maybe we can do something.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other announcements? I will say that I attended the Kansas Association of Counties Governing Board meeting in Topeka last Thursday and Friday, a new executive director was selected from a vote from the board, it has yet to be announced who is, whether they've accepted the position or not, but that's what's going on at the KAC, was the main topic and from that board, so look for new leadership in that regard, so. Before we adjourn to the next room, there will be a study session in room one oh seven B there, so we'll go over several different things. I will take a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.